I mean, first let out of there and let our battalion chiefs and... Okay, we will call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and another.
Okay. Minutes and reports received and filed. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got a Home Builders Association Board Meeting today, Planning Commission Meeting tonight, Sawdust Management District Board Meeting tomorrow, Home Builders Association Membership Meeting tomorrow night, Ladies Night Bingo, good time. Going out. Got our soup and chili cook-off Thursday, Kristy? All right. And I think the Cole County Chiefs Meeting is Thursday evening as well. I think that's about it until next week.
I have a meeting with Lou Kohl Snyder, the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership tomorrow. I think we're... I'm also working on a Harland Port Meeting for next Monday. And Monday, we have a trip to Osage.
Yep.
Is that Monday?
Yeah. Aight, I'll figure out with Eric because I think we're gonna just go out together probably.
Oh, okay. We do have it on the agenda, sorry.
Okay.
Miss Al, thank you.
Yeah. I'm going to get my booster shot tomorrow. Thursday, I just found out we don't have traffic and safety, so then I go out and eat chili and soup at the Health Department. And then Friday, I'm gonna take off, it's my birthday. And then, not really, but Monday is my birthday, is the tour. So that's all I've got. And Commission comments. What do we have with Wall Street? Are they...
The health insurance, the renewal for 2022.
Okay, do we want to just go ahead and do that and let them go on? Why don't we come on up and...
You're getting a better rate since we moved you up in the meeting, right?
Yeah.
Well, you do get a good rate today.
All right. See, I was working already. Morning, thank you. I'm looking forward to these. I'll go ahead and get my blank stare look on my face right now.
I know you do, Joe.
This is only one sheet, usually they're...
This is, this is, this one is very simple. We're gonna be, uh, the, uh, there you go. Oh, sorry. Like the three Bs in school, be brief, be bright, and be gone. So... First of all, thank you to the Commission for the opportunity to come up and visit with you. This is regarding the stop loss. So basically, the reinsurance of the stop loss. As a quick reminder, and we know we touch base on this a few times a year, so this one's pretty high level, but just as a reminder, we are what we call self-funded, you know, with our medical and pharmacy benefits. Years ago, we used to be fully insured with various carriers, Blue Cross or United and so forth, where you would pay them all the premium, they would take the risk, good or bad, and then you would have a renewal every year. If the rates went up much, we would shop carriers and you kind of really chased premium, if you will, not to belittle what those carriers do, but over time, you might go from Blue Cross, United, and so forth. Several years ago, as the county continued to grow with its members, both employees and dependents, it made sense financially to look at risk management and finance it a different way. So we looked at going what we call partial self-funded because we buy reinsurance to cover us on two areas. And I'm gonna walk through that today. Up on the top left, we are with UMR. And UMR is the third-party administrator that administers the program. They're owned by United Healthcare. And at the time that we were fully insured and went self-funded, we were with United Healthcare at that time. So it was a fairly easy transition to stay with them, to do the administration. And we kept the medical provider network the same. So there was minimal disruption to any of the employees because the physicians and providers, hospitals, clinics, all remained the same. When you are self-funded, and again, partial self-funded, you purchase reinsurance to protect you and manage the risk of both individuals and the group as a whole. So on the left-hand side, if you don't mind, I'll walk through the coverages. And then we have three columns. We have current, the renewal of the current. And then we also included in one of the carriers that we marketed, we marketed this to several carriers, but it gives you an idea that the current carrier is still very competitive and the most competitive when you look at, you know, where the marketplace was. So just going down the left, the carrier that we're with today is Sun Life. And I'll focus on current and renewal. You'll notice the third carrier listed as Symetra. I won't spend a lot of time on that, but it just gives you a benchmark because they're not as competitive as the renewal. The network is United Healthcare Choice Plus. There are no commissions built into the stop-loss policy. Wall Street Group gets paid a per-employee-per-month fee, which is part of your admin cost, and that's not changing. We're not advocating a change there. So this is strictly just the cost of the reinsurance. The specific, just as a reminder, and we throw out a lot of terms here, for every specific person covered, employee, dependent, the county pays up to the first 75,000 of claims. That's medical, pharmacy, combined claims for a, for this period of this contract. And I'll talk about that in a second. So when we go out to the market and ask a reinsurance carrier to cover us for everything over 75,000, they're looking at our census of covered employees and dependents. They're looking at the health of those individuals, the claims history, really focusing on any high-risk claimants. And that helps them determine what they're gonna charge for that policy premium. So the policy is that your purchasing covers everything over 75,000. It's an unlimited maximum because of healthcare reform. So that, if we had a $5 million claim on an individual, unfortunately, the county would pay the first 75,000. If everything else was a covered claim, covered benefit, that carrier would pay that because there's no maximum amount they're gonna pay. Under ACA, it's unlimited now. The contract is a 1215. That means, just like the contract we're in today for 2021, it covers everything from January 1st through December 31st. And any claim that's incurred during that time, that's processed and paid during that time, and the remaining three months, January, February, and March, which is where the 15 comes, those are all covered under this policy. So if someone would go in and have an MRI on December 12th, it gets paid February 18th. It's still covered under this policy, as an example. Again, it covers medical and pharmacy, which is important just because pharmacy continues to be a large cost item, especially to get into high-costing specialty medications. So that is the first coverage that we have, is the specific individual coverage. And we're gonna talk more about the premiums in a second. Right below that, we also purchase aggregate. And if you can think about aggregate being an umbrella, this covers all the members of the plan and gives you a ceiling that if you had a terrible year and we had a lot of members reach that 75,000, there's a ceiling that once you would hit a combined ceiling, you would be done for the year, and the aggregate coverage would step in. I know I'm kind of walking through this quickly, but just reminding the Commission of the coverages. The aggregate umbrella coverage is a $1 million insurance policy and basically also set up on a 1215 contract, covers medical and pharmacy. The other things listed there, the disclosure right below that and final claims data, it's somewhat irrelevant because if we stay with Sun Life, they're already on the risk. There's nothing else we need to do to renew. We do have to sign a renewal acceptance with them, which we brought that along today, that you all can take under advisement or sign it when you want to, whether it's today or taking under advisement. But we're with them, so there's no other underwriting that needs to be done. Any questions before we get into premiums? Okay? The next line gets into the numbers, which is where the hard-dollar costs are. So again, the first thing listed here where it says stop-loss premium fixed, and right below that, you'll see the word specific again, which is what you're paying in premium for that $75,000 policy. So they're currently, and you'll see the census listed there, we have 215 employee-onlies, six employee-spouse, 64 employee-children, whether it's one child or more, and then 15 families, which would be an employee-spouse and one or more children, covered under the policy. So that's currently who the policy is covering. Of course, that can change month to month. And the premiums they're charging, and you can see the current employee-only premium is $96.04 per employee per month. And then you have your other rates listed. I won't read through all those, but you have your other rates listed for the other three categories of some type of family coverage. And how they come up with that annual premium of 487,000 is taking that census, so taking that 215 times the 96.04 times 12, do the same thing for all the categories. You add that up, and they give you an annual specific premium, of course, based off of that census. You'll notice that the good news is, this is your largest fixed cost. So that roughly, roughly 487,000 and some change, we have a zero increase. We did share with Debbie, when this first came down from Sun Life, it was about a 5.5% increase. And we worked with them to get it to a zero. So we're very happy they came down and got to a zero increase, which is great. Right below that, so that is your specific reinsurance. That's, again, the coverage for the 75,000. Anything over that is covered by this insurance policy. So that's your biggest premium. Right below that, you'll see aggregate coverage. And it's the 300 covered employees. Currently, it's $6.85. That is bumping up a little bit to $7.54. So that premium for that umbrella coverage, for that $1 million of coverage under the aggregate, is going from $24,660 to $27,144. So just under a $3,000 increase. When you add all those numbers up, you can see we're at just under 5,000, or excuse me, 5,000,000, 512,000, we're just under that, and going to just over 5,140. So again, less than a total $3,000 difference and less than a half a percent when you look at the renewal. So those are really where we focus because those are hard dollars that you're spending. If the county had zero claims, you're still gonna spend that roughly half a million dollars in premium, just like you do for your home or your car. Even if you don't have a claim, you're buying reinsurance to cover that. Right below that, we're gonna get into your ceiling coverage, which are really soft dollars. But let me stop with that first and see if there's any questions. Okay? So right below that, you'll notice there's an increase here, and I'm not belittling that. But this is your ceiling that they look at the group as a whole, what's going on with claims and so forth, and they come up with a ceiling. And with that, it's usually 25% over what they expect you to spend. So it's not a matter of you all hitting this. If you did, that's where this $1 million of coverage comes in. But year after year, you know, we haven't had an aggregate claim. We've never hit that ceiling. But with utilization of medical and pharmacy, you typically see that bump up a little bit each year just due to medical inflation and trend. So when you look at your aggregate claim liability, these are factors that the underwriters use to actuarially predict what your exposure is, and then they add that corridor onto it. So when you look at the numbers, again, they give it to you in a four-tier category. The employee-only is currently 43942. That's going to 49248. I won't read through all the other numbers, but when you add all that up, we're basically at 2,520,000. It's going to 2,300,000. Again, I'm not belittling that difference, but that is a soft-dollar ceiling. If we spend 1.9 million, that number's irrelevant, whether it's a 2 million or 2.3 or so forth. So this is not money you're spending. This is the maximum you would spend before that $1 million would kick in. So let me stop with that. I hit that pretty quick, but any questions on that? Okay? I think when you look at that and then look at your total again, while it says a 9.76 increase, again, those are your soft-dollar ceilings. What you're really, what we typically focus on is what's your hard dollar you're spending, which we're basically almost at a flat increase there, just a little bit of an increase on the aggregate premium. With that said, and Debbie may or may not have visited with the Commissioner already, you know, your all's funding, obviously, you're doing well. We're not suggesting that you need to change premiums or anything else. And that's something you all may have already visited on or not something we necessarily need to discuss now. But, you know, your plan is running very well, and you all have been running very well since we've went to this type of funding arrangement. So let me stop with that, see if Debbie has any other comments to that or...
No, I think it's a very good renewal from Sun Life on the stop loss to be at the 0.49. So I would recommend you guys go ahead and renew with Sun Life for the stop loss. And that going forward, because of the soft match money and because our fund doing very well, like Randy said, I would suggest we do not change the premiums going into 2022. We continue to pay the dependents as we do now, which you guys are paying half the cost, and that we continue to pay the full cost for the employees. So I'd like to go ahead and do all of that today so we can go ahead and open enrollment for the employees so they have time to make changes if they want. So, and they did get the renewal from Sun Life. They also handled the dental, vision, optional life, and group life. And those rates are not changing either.
Correct.
So, which is, it's a good thing. So it's really, we're probably in their book of business at one of the few employers that's not changing very much. So I would say we go ahead and sign the renewal for Sun Life stop loss and then if you guys would approve those other things so we can start with open enrollment.
I agree.
Do you like to start, most places start off enrollment, not start with one? Sorry, we're just a little bit behind you.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll offer a motion to renew our insurance with the UMR based upon the numbers presented to us today.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then maybe a motion to approve the Sun Life optional coverage with dental, vision, life, and optional life.
Give me those again.
Dental, vision, group life, and optional life. With Sun Life.
A motion to renew coverage for the current coverage for dental, vision, group life, and...
Optional.
Optional life.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. We will return to our agenda, bids and contracts, approval of construction contracts for installation of school zone flashers on Pioneer Trail Drive.
So I sent you the information last night. You should have a sheet of paper in front of you. We kind of buy a little bit of luck and timing with everything. We're able to do school zone flashers out of Pioneer Trail Drive this year. We had met with the Traffic and Safety Advisory Board back in April and presented this request to them to do this. The request came from a teacher out at Pioneer Trail School. Ran it through them. They agreed that it would be a good thing to do that and agreed with our proposal. So really, it was just a matter of finding the funds to be able to do it. We had all of our safety funds tied up in Tanner Bridge Road at the time that was going to go this year. With that having to push to next year, it allowed the funding to move towards doing these school zone flashers this year. So Village of Wardsville was doing their cooperative project in which that was installing school zone flashers. So they bid the project, added a cooperative procurement in their project, which allows us to piggyback. And so the contractor selected that option. And so they're able to do it for the same price. The cost is $17,194. Jefferson City Public Schools is sharing the cost. They're gonna pay half. So our net cost would only be $8,697. We'll do the project and then send them an invoice for that amount when it's done. So this is a good deal at probably the best price we were gonna get based on the circumstances allowing us to piggyback and just with timing. So definitely would recommend approval of this. And if approved, the project would be done by the end of the year. And I forgot to mention, it's with Meyer Electric is the contractor. So any questions?
Nope. Worked out good?
Yep.
Yep.
Good. Make a motion, we approve the construction contract for install of the school zone flashers on Pioneer Trail Drive with Meyer Electric.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Eric.
Approval and signing of safe crib contract with Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Hello, this is a renewal of our safe crib program. So it's a program we do for people who meet the eligibility requirements, and we give them a crib for their baby and talk about safe sleep. DHSS recently reorganized and made an Office of Childhood within the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the contract is no longer with DHSS, but now is with DESI.
Yes.
Yes.
So it's like page four, you have to write.
A motion to approve and sign the safe crib contract with the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do we have any other unfinished business? Okay, new business accounts payable review?
Yeah, credit cards. I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending final review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number 19.
This is for $42,675. This is the law enforcement. This is extra money they received in surplus property. So I'd ask for approval today.
Good?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to sign Budget Adjustment Number 19 for $42,675 for the law enforcement fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second and final reading of Budget Adjustment Number 20.
This is for $15,124. This is for a grant received by the, I guess, Bayless Office, Part 55.
All right. Make a motion, we sign Budget Adjustment Number 20 for $15,124 for the general fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Assessor's Office to present occupancy of natural disaster homes. Ms. Jackie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I sent a Excel sheet Friday with the different tabs of occupancy, natural disaster, and one error and omission. These are two. Do I have any questions on them?
I've got a couple of questions, Jackie. What happens to those who have moved in on or after October 4th?
Then we don't tax the home till full value for January.
Okay, so they slip in under the, it gets too small at some point, too late?
Yeah.
Okay. And the ones who, there's nobody on the list before 7/22, but before July 22nd, so they were already rolled into the numbers for the year?
Well, once we do the BOE...
Yes.
Then that's when we start tracking these. So everybody else was notified prior to BOE.
Right, okay. So I don't know how many there are on the list here. I was gonna count. Is it like 30 or 35 or...
Probably around 40.
40 plus.
Forty-eight.
Here's the question I have is, at an earlier meeting, when we, I think, learned that there were maybe 1,306 parcels in county that received the, I'd call it a nastogram or whatever you might want to call it, a notice that your assessment's going up. Did, does that 1,306 include the people that would have been on a list from January 1 through July 22nd?
I believe so, but they, it may be in a different count because we do them, they get a different notice than...
Okay.
Regular impact notice. But I could check and get numbers.
Could you? I'm curious if that 1,306 included folks who just finished construction and went on in.
Okay.
Let's see. And how do you determine construction completed? Is there an occupancy permit issued? Or is there a building permit that's signed off on?
We go to each property and determine when it's occupied. Most of the time, we get homeowners that are there that give us the information telling us they've moved in.
Okay. Do you look at the last inspection date on inspection reports?
We don't. The only thing we get are building permits.
Okay, do you look, the building, okay, but you don't look at the inspection, the final inspection date as to maybe the date that it could be occupied?
From the city?
Yes.
We don't get that.
Have you ever asked for it?
I can. We have to go out and measure it and take pictures and put it all in our data, so...
Do you ever get an argument that it was ready to be occupied, but I didn't occupy it?
We've had a few, and then we've changed it.
Okay.
We leave a card when we are out there telling them that we've occupied it. We put the information on that card telling them if we don't speak to somebody, how many bedroom, bathroom, if we determine that we're gonna add square footage to the basement. That's all put on that occupancy card. And then we ask them to call back in, I think, three to five business days and tell us if any of that's wrong. If it's all correct, then we don't need a phone call back.
And maybe finally, there was, there was one schedule that just had one on it, and it was a fire? There's provision in state law that says if your, if your house burns down halfway through the year, you only owe the taxes for the...
Occupancy.
The occupancy period.
And natural disaster, yeah.
And natural disaster. Do you have a ton of these back?
So this is the same as the tornadoes. When the tornado came through, we treat fire homes the same way.
Got it. That's the questions I had. So do we offer a motion to accept the reports? Or is this just notification to us?
I'm sorry.
Do we bless this thing with a motion, or do we say? Okay.
I'm trying to find the email, see exactly what we had on there. We had it open a minute ago. We just approved the errors and omissions and...
Presented today.
Trying to remember how we worded that before, to accept the values presented. I was worried that way. Make a motion, we accept the corrected assessed valuation presented today.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie. Yeah, we did that. Okay, discussion of COVID families first, Coronavirus Response Act Relief Extension.
So you talked to us last week about this?
Yes.
And we needed to get it basically approved. So we're just gonna, I think we were all okay with it. So we're just gonna write it down today that we're gonna extend it to the end of October. And then you're gonna keep putting it on the agenda so we can revisit it each month. And basically, it's a month-to-month basis.
But yeah, at this time, it would be determined that it would be drop dead on October 31st unless it's renewed by federal.
And that's the COVID 80 hours for the employees that we'd like to officially extend it to the 31st of October.
Okay, we're needing to change anything on that? Or it's all working okay and we were...
No, it'd be just like it was before, so other than extending. We don't have to, but as Cole County is suggesting we extend that.
Right for our boys.
And this is really a firm date unless the feds say something come November 1 or effective November... effective November one?
My understanding of our conversations, that we hope to not have to keep extending it, third days. I think right now, we've got four active that bled over from September to October, so it's not like we have a bunch.
Right.
But there are a few that had not utilized the time off that we would like to continue through the end of the month. But we're hoping to be able to end it at the end of the month unless federal reinstates it.
How do we get the word out to our people, then?
You can send an email before. You would just send the form and the documentation that the commission approved it to the department heads and the elected officials. So, then we always let them take it to their employees.
Okay.
And we extended it until September thirtieth before, but that was for like a three-month period or something like that.
And that was, the federal government had it to the thirtieth too. But now they've stopped, we're just asking to extend it as.
Okay.
As a voluntary.
Yes, there you go.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that, and I think we need to work with our employees on this, and this is for ones that have not previously used it. So, it's not a second time around for them or anything, so.
Yep, I'm good too.
Make a motion, we extend the Families First Coronavirus Response Act Relief Extension until October thirty-first.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion of third-floor cleaning.
Did you mail these out?
I did it.
Okay. I saw these, or I saw an email someone on the line, I don't know.
I just put this on the agenda to kinda see what direction you guys were wanting to go with it. I reached out to thirteen companies to come and do walkthroughs, and the first page is the only three that I've received, and they all do a little bit different things for us, or would do. Half-price Heating and Cooling, they would only replace the ceiling vents. He said that would be cheaper than if you would take it down, clean it, and then replace it again. Junior Pro Clean, they would clean within the ductwork, and then they would also do the carpet cleaning. I also talked to Vacuum Man, who came and did a walkthrough. I just haven't received a quote from him. He was concerned about if you put a wand in the ductwork and it could damage it if it's too old, the ductwork. And then CE Berry Janitorial Services, they would do the deep cleaning portion of it, but that wouldn't include the carpets or any of the ductwork or vent cleaning.
You can see from the second page, he's contacted. Benny?
Yeah.
Go ahead, thirteen.
Thirteen of them. Left voicemails.
Don't have enough workers, or some reason why. So, and again, this has probably been, what, three to, three weeks to four weeks to this process.
Since we talked about it on that one agenda. So, I could get two more quotes, one from Rodell for the deep cleaning aspect, and then one from Vacuum Man, which would clean the ductwork, but I just haven't heard back, haven't received one. So, I just didn't know what you guys wanted me to do.
Well, it needs to be done, but they're gonna pick and choose what they wanna do.
There's not one that would do everything. And then the total at the bottom, that's if we just did all of it. It'd be the twenty-two thousand.
And so, we also talked about even our own employees through the maintenance department. I'm not sure if Greg had talked to anybody, but doing comp time at overtime rate would still be less money than this, but he doesn't think there's any of them that would be willing to do it.
I will call Sam Radel and see if he's interested in doing it, but.
He's on the list.
Yeah.
He did one walkthrough, and then he didn't show up for a second one. And then he's the one that showed up on Thursday and did another one, so.
Did anybody bid the cleaning, the vent grids? You just had one said replace them?
Just, yeah, just replace them. He said that would be cheaper than taking them down, cleaning, and putting them back up.
Out.
Greg, does that make any sense, or?
I don't think you're gonna get the same quality bid you got up here now, from what I understand from just reading what she had sent you over. They're going with a cheaper bid.
It was like a hundred and thirty-nine dollars per vent, I think.
These are all steel, steel collars, where it's, the new ones, I believe, that she was quoted was, you got your vent, and you got, I don't wanna call it star foam, but for more or less, that's what the backing is, and it's tied into that. I don't think it's the same quality. Because one of those right there, you're probably looking at two fifty, two seventy-five for a vent.
Can we get some specs on what the vents would be? I'm curious how it would be cheaper to replace them, and what they're gonna replace them with. Are they gonna replace them with something that maybe would be mold-resistant? Because, I mean, that's part of the problem that we're having up there is the molded mildew, and we can clean them, but if it's gonna keep coming back.
He did mention that he didn't think there was like a backing on these, and the ones that he was ordering would have that, to protect anything from coming down.
It would have a filter?
Yeah.
I mean, we can put filters in these too, but.
How was the inspection?
I'd like to see it, if we can see what they're replacing. I just don't see a benefit in that, and I don't see how cleaning them would be that difficult, because of the dust and the humidity and stuff that we're seeing, that's turning into the molded mildews on the outside. I don't know. You tend to agree on that, Greg?
I agree with you on that. So, on the outside, it's just where the humidity and the cold air coming out.
So, the deep, the deep cleaning, would that involve them coming in and wiping them down? Good, what's the deep cleaning involved?
Not for the one that we have quotes for. It would be dusting, wiping everything down, that type of office cleaning. They would not clean the vents. Rodell, he said he would do the vents, cleaning it. I just don't have a quote from him yet.
So, the dusting and stuff, I don't think that's the issue.
Well, they would do all the wipe down, the walls, the, just everything. Pretty much a wall to floor, anything that needs to be cleaned.
But that's not the problem with the molded mildew. So, it just seems like we're getting, I thought that was kinda the scope of the project, was the molded mildew issue up there, and that definitely needs to be addressed. The cleaning part, it doesn't seem like that's part of what we were needing. Walls dusted and everything.
That was the direction that.
Yeah, that's what the RFP was. It was cleaning as well as the vents and all that. So, that's what I went off of whenever I called them.
At one time, and then maintenance would take back over after that, I guess, is the impression I got.
So, we had to mold a mildew on the vents, on that couch, in that meeting room, conference room? Was there some on the walls?
There was none that had showed up yet, but just precautionary, where we're gonna wash everything down real good, kill anything that was on there. And then shampoo the carpet as they went out.
Okay, and then tell them to keep their windows closed?
That's what I told.
Where the humidity is probably coming from, and it's just not able to keep up up there.
Correct. Today, we did a test, there was six windows that were open and four that were unlatchable closed.
Well, we got the bids. We don't have one bid that takes care of all the RFP, do we?
No.
Was that how we did it, was to do, like a pick and choose?
No, so we did the RFP, and then no one showed up for the pre-bid meeting. So, then we canceled that, and then I started calling people to do walkthroughs and get quotes.
So, these are just phone bids? They're not even a response to the RFP?
Correct. And if you guys don't want the deep cleaning of the dusting and stuff, then we don't have to do that. I just put it on here to get some type of direction of what you guys were wanting.
Especially since it's already been four weeks out, so we wanted to let you guys tell us where to go from here.
Yeah.
Let me check with Radel, 'cause I, I think probably if you're gonna do it, you might as well do a deep cleaning at the same time, just.
Well, I'll have to call him and tell him to change it, because when we did a walkthrough, I said everything. So, if we're just wanting to wipe down the couch or just certain things, then that'll have to change.
I mean, if they have issues up there, I think we need to address all the issues and not, not do it, excuse my language, half-assed. I think we need to do it, do it all.
Do it full ass, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
There's names of cleaning up there. So, I mean, I don't have a problem doing this. I think just what started it all was the molded mildew issue. And then it kinda, kinda grew from there, so. I wanna get the vents and them covers cleaned up as soon as possible. And that's who, that Junior's Pro Clean said they would do the ductwork cleaning and clean the exterior vents and wipe them all down and.
So, Junior Pro Clean and Half Price Heating and Cooling came together to do the walkthrough, and they said that the Junior Pro Clean would clean the ductwork, and they would take the vent down, but they wouldn't do any type of cleaning. They would be replacing the vent with the Half Price Heating and Cooling. So, I can call them about a price on that.
So, it'd be both of them together would be taking care of the ductwork and the vent covers?
Mm-hmm. And I can call Half Price Heating and Cooling to just get a price on the cleaning of it to see what it is.
Yeah, maybe let's put it back on the agenda for next week, and then I will try to get ahold of Radel cleaning. And I don't.
I'd just put it out there to have somebody come in here for six grand. How many vents we got up there? You can clean a hell of a lot of vents in a day, and replace it for six grand. I'm not buying that. So, the ductwork cleaning, I don't have a clue what that runs, so if, that bid may be around the same, but I just, I'm having troubles following that for six thousand. We can't get somebody to clean those grids. I might take off this weekend, I'll come here and do it for six grand. I'll probably cut people in there and volunteer, I guess, sign up. So, I don't know, y'all got any other ideas? Bisc, I wish I would say, knew exactly what to tell you on this, too.
I don't have a strong opinion on anything, except let's get it done, and sooner rather than later. So, if we put it off one more week, we almost have to commit to making a decision next Tuesday. Yeah. One way or another. So, in the meantime, you volunteered to make a call. Greg, you were gonna look into some specs?
Yeah, she was gonna get some specs for one, wanting to hook back, and I have a feeling I know what he's wanting to hook back, and I'm gonna say no.
Can we put filters in these?
No, not really. But the problem's not coming, it's not, not working coming, it's where the humidity's hitting the edge waves, where the cold air's coming out.
Yeah, the filters are more for dust and stuff, not for the humidity, though. And if you've got that image coming in, it's gonna stop up your filters even worse, because you gotta have that in there, so.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that does duct cleaning that you know of, Greg?
No, just those, those guys. I don't really don't think we need ducts cleaning, I just wipe down the dirt, which we've already done once.
So, they are wiped down now?
Yeah.
No, there's still dirt on them right now.
Is there?
There's still dirt on them. I don't know when the last time they were wiped down, but there's dirt up there.
Well, I think what happened, y'all started wiping them down, then they were gonna come in, do the inspection. They said, don't touch them until after the inspection, so we may need to go up there and look at them again.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, for six thousand, if somebody wants, if we wanna pay a little overtime and they wanna, you know, make a little extra money to wipe them down, I'd rather pair our own employees a little extra to. They may not be standing in line to volunteer.
Well, let's table it till next week, and next week, we will make a decision.
We'll put it back on the agenda.
Yeah, I just, I. Okay, first reading of budget adjustment number twenty-one.
Okay, this is for a hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. This is for, um, the health department, and a grant with the health department. This is where the generator was going to come from. So, there's no action today? We'll bring it back up in ten days.
Okay. Okay, do we have anything else before we go into closed session?
Greg, on that report from when they did that inspection upstairs, did they recommend cleaning the vents?
Uh, the one that we paid to get to him, and he just said wipe down some stuff that he saw, other than that, he was fine with everything. Maybe we oughta just have him come back and run another air sample and see if there is. We may have already taken care of most of them.
Okay, well, you mentioned you didn't think it needed to be done, so I'm questioning that as well.
I think if we just wipe down the vents real good, get soap and water.
Is that couch still up there?
Yes.
Yeah, I could never get an answer on whether it's so wet or not.
Whose couch is it?
I don't know. I didn't see a tag on it, so I'm not sure if it is.
I think it's county property. It's on the inventory.
Is it?
I'd get it out of there, because it was growing on there. And that's not gonna help things at all.
I think it's been wiped down since then, too, so.
Okay, I mean, if they wanna wipe it down and still use it, I mean, that's fine. I'd make sure that that was eliminated first and foremost, because it was on the wall behind it and everything.
Yeah, we have a pretty share of them wiped down. Whatever was built on it was wiped up, and the walls cleaned up behind it.
So, now, are they only here every other day, so we could go up there and hit an office each day, that they're not here? And, I mean, take some stuff and spray down those vent covers, get them good and clean, kill any molded mildew that's there?
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're not all there every day, right? They're alternating shifts or whatever with their COVID schedule?
Yeah. There's a lot of times there's nobody up there running all.
So, I'd say we'd look at that, too, just work with.
Yeah, I, yeah, at these prices, I want it done. I mean, I, but.
Okay.
We need to, yeah, we need to.
Let's try to do some more research for next week. I think we need to, like Eric said, make a decision next week.
If you want, I can have somebody start cleaning the ducts.
That's where I'm going with it right now. I know y'all are limited on time, too, and y'all are still trying to take care of all the other stuff here at the county of maintenance.
And you got an employee getting ready to depart, so you'll be.
I'm still all right.
Okay.
So, if they're gonna do that, do you want me to call about replace or anything else?
I'll still call Radel, and, but, I mean.
I'll tell you, unless something really changes significantly, I'm not gonna replace the grids.
No, I, I, no, I'm.
I don't wanna waste your time getting them either, if.
I just, I wanna remediate the mold, you know, whatever, whatever it takes, so.
So, she won't get the specs on those. He'll go ahead and clean that, and then maybe after that's cleaned, and after we get a price for cleaning everything else, we do hire that company back to do another test of that, just to reassure the prosecutor and the employees, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, if we can, if we can kinda do it ourselves first, and then bring him back in, if there's, because I, what was it in the wall? It was minimal.
Yeah, it's whatever got spilt on the back of the couch, you ran down the wall.
Yeah.
It's like a solder or something, it was sticky.
Okay.
I'm gonna keep track of the humidity up there, too. I'm gonna keep track of the humidity up there, too. I know during the summer, it gets really hot up there.
Yeah.
And humid.
And it's just that open concept up there, hot air rises cold downstairs, so you've got people downstairs that are freezing, you got people upstairs.
Yeah, and then they open their windows, and then that's where your humidity's coming in, so. And then our HVAC, which is pretty antiquated, can't keep up either, so.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we can, if there's any way we can keep an eye on what the humidity level is up there?
I could put something to duck work down there and see.
Maybe get some, even some dehumidifiers up there, right? Didn't you say they had some up there? Especially during the summer, so, well, let's go with that plan.
Okay.
I don't like cleaning.
No, well, this is, it's high, so yeah, we can try that first, but. Okay. Anything else? Chris, do you want to give an update on COVID in Cole County, or it's really pretty?
Knock on something.
It's what?
Knock on something.
I know. I looked at the numbers this morning, and statewide, the hospitalizations were down to 920, so that's the lowest I've seen them in a while. They were running 1,600, 1,300 yesterday, we're 1,200. So today, for them to fall below 1,000, I thought was great. When you look at the DHS website for all our indicators, we're, everything for us is either in green, yellow, or orange, except our number of tests, it's still red. I guess, you know, they have some benchmark of number of tests they want us to do, but we're only testing sick people, so I think it's good that our numbers of tests are going down, because that means we have less sick people, but.
So the 7% positivity rate?
Right, that means 70, 7% of the people that are going in to get tested.
Of the ones tested?
Right.
And we're testing sick people, so you would think it would potentially be higher than that.
Right, one of our, well, I guess not, one of our providers on the call would always talk about the number, their positivity rate for the number of tests they were doing. One day I asked, I'm like, so you're just testing sick people, right? And they said yes, because that day it was like 30%, it's like 10%. I'm like, so, and they had tested, oh, I guess it was 13%. So I'm like, okay, if 13% of the sick people have COVID-19, what do the other 83% have? And they're like, yeah, I don't know. So I think it's interesting, yeah, that 7% is of the people that are being tested. Now, there are some people that are being tested before they have, like, elective surgeries or to travel, things like that, but the majority of our people being tested are people who have the symptoms of COVID-19, so. I think we're doing really well. Our schools are doing really well. We had a meeting with them last Thursday, and they're just, a lot of them had no cases, maybe one case, you know, if it was three or four, it was usually like one household, and it was the siblings. They still haven't really seen any in-school transmission, it's usually from the household contact, so.
Yeah, our hospital numbers are good, St. Mary's today, you know, they had Mike Hyde, where they're gonna loosen their visiting restrictions, too. So it's not like some of those calls on Monday when we.
DHS SSS and DUSI are releasing some new guidance for schools. They're trying to do this like test till they stay program, but I don't think any of our schools are interested in doing testing. They don't have the staff, they don't have the time, and so. Maybe in the big cities.
About the emails we just got about the rapid testing? So where are those available at, if somebody's interested in rapid test?
Most of the urgent cares, you know, JCMG, St. Mary's, and Cadbury's, and they can go to urgent care and they can get a rapid test, also like Tolson's, I think.
They didn't drive-throughs on those, where they swab you and?
Yeah.
Tolson's, you.
And I, I didn't read his whole.
You stay in your car.
And I, I'm not familiar with what Callaway County is doing, if they're doing it, if it's just for sick people, if they're trying to do some sort of sentinel testing for all employees, I'm not really sure what the goal of that is.
Yeah, if we did Scholastic alone, it, I mean, that's.
Well, and I mean, that's just a snapshot in time, I mean, you could be negative today and positive tomorrow.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I look at.
Unless they're just doing sick people.
Yeah.
I mean, this is probably a one-day thing that they're doing, that they're doing it with the businesses, but it's not gonna, certainly they're not going out there every day.
And they have a free testing event here at American Legion on Sunday, and there's another one on October 24th, so DHS SSS is still doing those.
And I didn't see anybody up there at that time, Sunday, no.
Okay.
So, we're doing well, keep it, keep going.
Anything else?
I do want to submit a report that came from Reagan Use Crisis Center. It's basically their application for funding through our budget process, so it's just an item that the clerk's office puts at the beginning of the, things submitted to you guys, so that's all I wanted, no action, just wanted to submit it.
Okay. Yep. Heather, Dano?
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to section.
Pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commissioner will go into closed session to discuss the following: Real estate under section 6.02 para n2, close para n.
Second.
Roll call?
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Okay.